I'm going to try to project. Forgive me, I have a touch of air dries. But good evening. My name is Crystal Gannon. I've been a member of the Mount Lake Terrace community here for over 20 years now. And I love serving this community in the schools, the parks, and youth sports programs. It's the love and commitment for the city of Mount Lake Terrace that makes me proud to be running for your city council position number seven. And as an elected member of your council, I am committed to utilizing my education and professional experience and personal background to lead with community transparency and accountability as the forefront of everything that I do. I would like to take a moment to thank Mount Lake Terrace News, Mount Lake Terrace Community Foundation for sponsoring this event, and everything that they do for the community, and the library for hosting. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Murray. I live here in the Town Center neighborhood where I bought my block here in 2008. Much of how I experience life here in Mount Lake Terrace is as a mom to two young children. I have a five-year-old and an eight-year-old. I've also had the privilege of working on the Civic Center campaign in support of our new city hall. Served the last two years on committees for the school district looking at enrollment growth and solutions for overcrowded and aging facilities. Served on the neighborhood parks improvement subcommittee and participated in the Mount Lake Terrace article. Professionally, I spent over 15 years in human resources and work as an HR manager for the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. I've helped create award-winning organization, milk culture at two organizations now. And I really want to bring that knowledge, skill, and experience to our community that I care about so much. I'm running for city council really to encourage and empower members of our community to get engaged civically and look forward to discussing how we can do that here this week. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Laura Sonmore. I've been on council for many years. One little thing about me is that I grew up in Mount Lake Terrace, so I'm very proud of this community and very proud of the way you two just presented yourselves too. We've got a lot of good talent in Mount Lake Terrace. And one of the things that in high school, I always wanted to be on city council. And I thought, oh, that's kind of strange. But I started running for office in high school, and then I did it in college. And it always made me feel so good. And I know the reason why is because I love helping people. And so that's why I've been serving so long is to give back to this wonderful community that helped raise me. A little bit about my background, I work for Boeing. I have a BA in law and justice from Central. I have a paralegal and management degree from Edmonds. And then I have a couple of degrees from Shoreline. And I just recently finished a master certificate project management degree. I have taken real estate classes so I can understand a little bit about the market here. I just finished a life coaching class a few years ago. I spent 12 weeks going through a NAMI program that's learning about mental illness in our community. So if you ever want to learn a little bit more about mental illness and what's happening to our society, I recommend not going either to a NAMI class or going to their website. Through being on council, I've also earned an advanced leadership certificate through the state. And those are just some of the things that we do on council. It's just fun to be here, and I look forward to your questions.
And I'll round it out. I want to first start with context. I'm fighting some pretty wicked back pains, so if I'm grimacing, it's not your question. Steve Woodard, it is an honor to be here. Thank you all for taking the time out of your day and your evening to be here with us. I have been a part of the Mount Lake Terrace community since 2004. And my spouse who's here in the back, thank you for coming. When we bought our home just up the street here, and have been involved in a number of ways. I started actually here on our library board about five years ago. We ended up sunsetting that one, and then I transitioned over to our Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission, both of which were just incredible opportunities. And then in December, when we lost our mayor, the opportunity opened up to step onto the council and have the opportunity to be reviewed by a number of folks, excuse me, colleagues here and was selected and have been serving since February. And so I will just say with that, I look forward to your questions.
All right. Thank you very much. And so I get the first question. It is to Ms. Gannon. What do you think the city council should be talking about that never gets talked about? And you have one minute.
Well, I will tell you that I cannot tell you all of this in one minute. I am an avid listener to the council meetings when I'm not able to attend. It's frequent that I am in my office, eating my lunch, listening to it, and screaming at the monitor because I know the answer to some things, and I just really want to participate. But some of the things that really need to be talked about, that they're not talking about currently except in passing and when it is brought up and it's kind of put to the side, is the homeless epidemic. We have a real problem in our parks right now. We need to work regionally. We need to work with the local law enforcement in the places around us and also with all the resources. We need to start looking at what we can do to get mental health services, what we can do to get drug addiction services. And look at that at a regional level. So that's one big thing that I find that is brought up by people in the community, and the council acknowledges that it's brought up, and then they move along.
All right. This next question is for Ms. Murray. What do you see as the biggest challenge for Mount Lake Terrace when light rail arrives in 2024?
You know, it's interesting to think of light rail as a challenge because I really honestly think of it as an opportunity for our community. It's actually one of the reasons that I was excited to move here and buy a home in 2008 was because the plan was to bring light rail this way. I work in downtown Seattle and use public transportation to get to and from work. So I'm excited about the opportunity to have light rail closer to home. I get to take it from the University of Washington downtown occasionally, and it's amazing and it's quick, it's efficient, and traffic isn't impacted. But I think opportunity for us to take a look at how to best prepare for that. I think that really is the question for the council over the next several years is how do we build out the infrastructure and support services for our increased growth? I think it's really important to look at things like sidewalks. I think it's really important to look at things like police services. I mean, to maintain the same level of, I think, community and services that we've gotten used to, it's important to plan for those things proactively as opposed to reacting to them after.
Laura Sonmore, how will you work with the business community to have a closer working relationship between businesses and the community?
Well, for your organization, having those meetings, I think it will get a lot easier when we're not so spread out. I know I went to the website recently, and there's an index that you can look at all the businesses. And you have to know their names and put it in there. And I thought it'd be wonderful to have a book, which I think we do have some listings of that. But to get more involved with the businesses, I know some of them are upset about the business license changes. But really getting involved with them, I guess I've got one. I was just trying to think of so many different things. I was just talking about, we went to the Hemlock Brewery on Tuesday, and we were talking about how neat it would be to be able to, really quick, go around to different businesses and hold our coffee or city at different businesses so we can kind of have a more relaxed feel and a lot more conversation.
This question for Mr. Woodard. Softball for you. If a recession hits, what would be the first cut you would make in the city budget?
Yeah. Oh, the first one. Well, you know, we have a lot of bills that are coming, and we're making decisions still in the lifetime. So if I really spread it out and looked at it, I would probably start, believe it or not, looking at, I don't know if I know this answer. I definitely would not cut our arts. I think that they're already underfunded there. So I think I'd come more with, what would I protect more than what I would cut? Our utilities are definitely a concern, so I don't know that that's necessarily an area that I would cut. Yeah, our pavilion needs help, so it's like, I don't know that there's anything I would necessarily cut as much as I would try to make sure that we step back and prioritize what needs to be stabilized in a bad economy. I'm still learning a lot about what we're actually paying for and how we're paying for it. So in that regard, I don't know. I can answer it any differently other than I think I would prioritize, flip that question of what more do I need to protect as opposed to what do I need to pull it back on? So yeah, not my best answer, but that's what you're going to get.
Okay, I didn't plan it this way, Ms. Gannon, but this falls off on what you were just saying. What steps can we take at the city level to address housing insecurity and homelessness?
So this is easy because it does dovetail with what I was saying earlier. We need to look at housing affordability, homelessness, mental health services, drug addiction services on a regional level. Like it or not, Seattle affects us. People come here from Seattle. Light rail is going to just increase that. So fixing Mount Lake Terrace doesn't help if everybody around us isn't fixing their city as well. Having that conversation on a regional level is something that I think some of the city councils and the leadership in the other cities have talked about. It hasn't been implemented. Someone needs to make that first step and say, let's get together. And I think that if elected to your city council, I could be the one to do that.
All right. Next question for Ms. Murray. What do you think is the city's biggest strength?
Oh, the people. So I work in human resources, and that's always my answer for everything. But it really, I mean, it is. It's why I love living here. I'll be honest, when I bought a home here, I wasn't sure whether it was, you know, a starter home that I would eventually move out of and move somewhere else. But ultimately, the relationships that I've been able to develop within this community, the support that I feel from neighbors, from, you know, the community that we've developed through my kids' daycare and schools and, you know, sports activities, like I feel so fortunate to live in a community where people care so much about the people around them. And I think that's exemplified in a million different ways. And again, is one of the reasons that I want to run for city council because I think there's a lot of people who have a lot of value to give our city, who need just the right on-ramp to get involved and aren't quite sure how to do that.
Laura, you have your second business question. What types of businesses or industries would you like to see or encourage to come into Mount Lake Terrace?
Yeah, that's a good one because we've talked about having big stores coming downtown Mount Lake Terrace, and then that scares the smaller stores away. And so I envision Mount Lake Terrace downtown as having more of an industrial type of businesses coming from downtown where their employees say enough's enough. I don't want to drive downtown anymore. I want to be closer to our homes and closer to more affordable living. And so I see more office buildings coming in Mount Lake Terrace. I see us aligning with the medical services, being so close to Swedish Hospital, having a medical district. And those are some of the items that we've looked at over the past. But we really have to look at what we want here because businesses are going to be coming here. And so it's really crowding them and nurturing that relationship with the businesses we do down there.
Question number two for Mr. Woodard. What plans or ideas do you have for addressing the need for affordable housing in Mount Lake Terrace?
This one I can answer. I'm actually doing some of this work now. And so I work at the community college here, Edmonds Community College, and we have been leading the charge for all of the community colleges to make sure that we have things like food pantries and that we're really addressing housing and food insecurity. So really making sure that we link those together. How that connects to affordable housing is that I'm able to find myself in a lot of different forums, but we're all talking about this same problem, what do we do? So from a city council perspective, what I am looking to do is to try to activate a number of our city councils to see, well, what can we do collectively? We've had the opportunity to sit with verges in particular, and they're a very good resource for a lot of different reasons. But in essence, trying to find the synergies to come together to figure out, well, what can we do as an actual region as opposed to just individual cities trying to do that work? And really just trying to make sure that we're out there and making it clear that we're interested in this conversation and turning the conversation into action items. So in particular, I'm working with a few foundations to see if we can't bring together an actual forum to actually create a blueprint to move forward.
Great. I just want to remind everybody to project. Is everybody still able to hear everybody? I'm feeling like we've got some soft talking when we stand here.
I wish they'd talk a little bit.
Talk louder, please. Thank you very much. All right. All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Murray, what do you think the city council should be talking about that never gets talked about in one minute?
So I think, again, something that's really important and that only tends to come up when it's a problem is how to bring new voices into the conversation. I think, again, it's something that gets discussed, but typically, once it's been raised as a concern as opposed to just planning that into our processes. And so that really is something for me that's really important to bring to the council is how do we build our processes when we're looking at taking on a new initiative, when we're looking at exploring something new? How do we do that work upfront to plan a process out that really is inclusive of all the voices in our community?
All right. Next question for Ms. Sonmore. What do you see as the biggest challenge for Mount Lake Terrace when light rail arrives in 2024?
Parking. It is, I'm already asking the council to come up with a parking plan already. I've been to Chicago, and I've been to Boston, I've been to DC, and I watch their transit. And my family's up on the East Coast. What they do is they go to the transit line, they drop off somebody, and they leave, or they try and find parking. And they say finding parking is the worst, even though they've, you know, what's at Chicago, their, I think their system is about 120 years old. It's been well-established. Ours is not established here. A lot of people who haven't been on the East Coast and lived in the East Coast like myself are, I'm going to find it difficult to understand what bus goes where and how do I get back home? And so I used to commute to Renton, and I would go to the parking rite, and it was a free-for-all. People trying to find a place to park as fast as they could because they don't want to miss their bus. And so I believe parking is going to be the worst issue that we're going to be having. And I think we need to start protecting our neighborhoods now because we're not used to parking on our streets. And so we have to look at parking permits, how to get the buses here on a reasonable schedule, not to fund any of the bus cuts. Sorry, Justin.
Mr. Woodard. How would you work with the businesses and integrate a closer working relationship between businesses and government?
Well, I would like to think I've started already. So first is by being accessible to them. In fact, while we were going through our rezoning process here, as a new person to the table as a council member, I really did not know what the business community was thinking or how they were responding. So just making myself available, which I would like to think I do for all citizens, making sure that that's an open communication channel. And then that next piece is just looking at what are some of the policies that we can look at from a council perspective to make it a little bit easier for development? I'm still learning a lot about what the development community goes through. And in our context, every day that we wait on something costs them more money, costs the residents more money in the long run. So just really making sure that from our perspective, what can we do to streamline as well as make it a little bit more friendly for developers without losing our sense of self and what we're looking for in the bigger picture? Just being accessible and making sure that I'm answering and returning calls.
All right. Next question for Ms. Gannon. If a recession hits, what would you cut first in the city budget?
Figure that one would be the next one. That's not as black and white as a lot would want to make it to be. You have to look at a budget. You have to dive into a budget, and you can't just cut services all out. You have to scale back, and you have to do it strategically without actually diving into that budget. I don't feel like I can give you an honest answer because it takes a lot of work, and it would take council work sessions, and it would take a lot of input. It would also take input of the community. It's not something that we should be sitting here on council deciding outright. You have to talk to the community. You have to have that open forum and make that decision as the Mount Lake Terrace community. And that's something that I, and I heard Erin say as well, look to bring to the Mount Lake Terrace City Council is the fact that the community is, there are constituents, and they're who we represent. And up until recently, we haven't heard a lot from them. We've found that the council meetings aren't very accessible to everyone. And so that's a main, I apologize, that's one thing that I'm looking to do is help bring people to the meetings. So many hands go up. But you guys are up there.
All right. Next question for Ms. Murray. What, let's see, I've lost my place here. What steps can we take at the city level to address housing insecurity and homelessness?
You know, this is an interesting topic that I honestly hadn't recognized how much it was impacting our community until I started talking to people. It had come up a lot in my regular conversations, but as I've been engaging with members of the community, it's come up again and again and again as a concern. And so I think one of the steps we can take is just to educate ourselves. So I took a day off of work, and I signed up for a civic boot camp that I had the opportunity to meet with stakeholders who are actually on the front lines doing the work of trying to make inroads into the problem of homelessness in our community. And so for me, my really big takeaways are, I think, as Crystal mentioned, I mean, this is a regional issue. We are not going to fix homelessness alone in Mount Lake Terrace. I think one of the things that concerned me in that conversation is that King County is moving towards a more coordinated solution where Seattle is working with all of the jurisdictions to look at homelessness. Because of our proximity to Seattle, but because we're in Snohomish County, we are part of that conversation. And so I think really encouraging Snohomish County to partner with King County is something that I would advocate we do as a city.
Sorry, we have a question next up here.
It's my call. We're just discussing.
I want my next one.
All right. Next question for Ms. Sonmore. What do you think is the city's biggest strength?
People. Obviously, growing up here, it's always been the people, hands down. Growing up here, we always felt that Mount Lake Terrace was the underdogs, and there was Edmonds and Woodway at the time. They were the kids driving the great cars. And the thing that gets Mount Lake Terrace is we're all even here. I'm planning, I'm getting ready to plan my high school reunion, and we're still all friends. I mean, it's phenomenal. Thank God for Facebook because that's how we keep in touch. But it is definitely the people, hands down.
All right. So Woodard, what types of businesses or industries would you encourage to come to Mount Lake Terrace?
Somehow I thought it could be a different question. Wait a minute. Well, mine's going to tie into diversity, which is just to say that I'm not sure that we're serving our full population here in Mount Lake Terrace. So I want us to, which I've actually been trying to push for, is for us to start really, in essence, documenting who's here and celebrating that. And then from an economic standpoint, saying, well, what businesses haven't been met? Because my argument has been, I think that there are folks that would love to move into Mount Lake Terrace who don't think they have a clientele here. And we haven't done a good job of making it clear, you have a clientele here. And it's not always racial. I mean, it's a lot of different ways that you can look at that. And that's the idea of diversity is that, for me, I'd want us to step back and say, who's here? What are we looking for? And who's not being served? Who's having to go to other communities and spend their dollars elsewhere that quite frankly could be spent right here in Mount Lake Terrace?
Again, a question for Ms. Gannon. What plans or ideas do you have for addressing the need for affordable housing in Mount Lake Terrace?
For addressing affordable housing, that's a tough one. In order to have affordable housing, we need more housing. It's unfortunate, but it's true. I recently went to a workshop in which they were talking about how the American dream of the house with the yard and the picket fence and the three bedrooms and the two-and-a-half beds is what has pushed us to have so many homeless people in America. When we want the large house with the large yard and we're taking up all of this land to house one family, that really creates a problem when we have dense communities like we do here. So affordable housing means we're going to have to look at having multifamily housing. We're going to have to look at zoning for duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. We can't just keep having single-family home zoning and have enough housing for all the people that are going to be in Mount Lake Terrace. I'll be having time, sorry.
We are really just trying.
Let us know if you get the same.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Did you answer the question about, yes, you did, about what the city's, council should be talking about that never be talked about, right? Okay. So I'm just going to freelance here, guys, because I'm kind of turned around. What do you see as the biggest challenge for Mount Lake Terrace when light rail arrives in 2024? Let's try the business.
All done. Get questions. Wonderful.
They're never going to put me in charge of anything again. Let's try this one. How will you work, sorry, this is normally Justin's question, but how will you work with the business community to have a closer working relationship between business and government?
Absolutely. Thank you. So my professional job is with the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. One of the reasons I took that job is because economic opportunity is really important to me. It ultimately is how I was able to buy a home. And so ensuring that we have viable options for people to work, to shop, to play that are close to home is really, really important to me. I think how I would work with them, I mean, it is spending time getting to know them, hearing what their concerns are. I think the thing that I have learned that impacted me the most about small and medium businesses is just how challenging it is for them to navigate all of the regulatory issues that they deal with, especially when those are changing really repeatedly. And so for me, I think being really thoughtful about when we're looking at putting new regulations in place and how that's going to impact those businesses in our community and those we'd like to see in our community is something that I will definitely spend a lot of time thinking about and having conversations around.
Good job.
I know we're going to Laura Sonmore next.
It's either.
She wrote it down. She's thinking.
Oh, no, I'm just doodling too. It's either about the housing or what to cut.
Ms. Sonmore. If a recession hits, what would you cut first in the city budget?
So that's a tough one, and I've been through that with the city before. And unfortunately, the thing that gets cut first is employees, and I hate to say that, and it's awful. But that's what happens a lot of time. You kind of look at it as a peanut butter spread. I really don't like that term. But you have to think of too is where the money's coming from because certain money can only be used for certain things. And so if this money comes from this bucket over here, it can only go to roads. And so some of the departments that are left that have money that's just coming from the general fund that they can just use, they're the ones that get cut first. But our citizens are so used to the service that we have here with our roads and the police, the police, we have to look at their budget. And so it's a whole host of different things, and it's not pretty. And so we don't want a recession. It's no fun.
All right. Mr. Woodard, next question. Let me know if you already got this. What do you see as the biggest challenge for Mount Lake Terrace when light rail arrives in 2024?
Yeah, I did not get that question. So really just the recognition that the light rail goes both ways. I think that we've been focused a lot on how it's going to benefit us moving into Seattle or up into Lynnwood, but then that's also folks coming our way and just making sure that we are prepared and have thought about, well, what are needs of non-Mount Lake Terrace residents, if you will? Parking is definitely going to be one of them, but I also go back to that shop idea of businesses or economic development just in general. And so when I said earlier to the question of, well, what businesses would I have here and also be thinking about, well, how do we fit in the region with something that we can offer that perhaps no one else is offering at this point from an economic standpoint? But again, just kind of recognizing that folks are going to go back and forth, of course, if you will, directionally. And right now, I think we think in terms of the homeless that might come this way. But I also think that there's a lot of folks with means that might be coming this way that could also have an equal, if not more impactful. that could also have an equal, if not more impactful, effect on what we consider Mount Lake Terrace. So just trying to figure out how do we not lose ourselves as we're opening up our world and welcoming folks into our world?
Good job. I always love it when people finish when their voice goes. All right, Ms. Ammon, and I'm going to just, yeah. Stress is taking over, I'm so sorry. You got it, gomam. All right. I hope you didn't get this question. What do you think is the city's biggest strength?
The city's biggest strength?
Yay!
Good job. So I've heard this a few times already, and everybody's saying the city's biggest strength is the people, and I agree to that in some way. I would say it's the community. People are coming and going from Mount Lake Terrace. And so the businesses, the small businesses are what made me love Mount Lake Terrace. Double D Meats, and then the new Ali Berto's is amazing, I don't know if you guys have been by there. Hemlock Brewery, the Small Cousins Hair Salon. If someone comes to me and they say, I just moved to Mount Lake Terrace, I can go down every single business and tell them exactly why to go there, why I love it. And they go there, they meet people, they meet new people, other people from Ballard who came here, I mean, I know everybody is moving here from Ballard. And that's where we're getting our sense of community. It's all these little businesses that everybody's going to, everybody's partaking in drinks at Hemlock, and they're meeting each other there. So while the people are coming and going, it's almost as if the community is centered around small businesses, and that's why we all live in Mount Lake Terrace.
You've got to keep it on your toes. So Ms. Murray, what types of businesses or industries would you encourage to come to Mount Lake Terrace?
Yeah, so I think one of the things, as the cost of living here has risen, and I see a lot of focus on retail space, some of my concern is bringing in jobs that are going to pay living wages that allow people to work near where they live. So for me, that really would be my focus around economic development, is how we encourage higher-wage jobs that people can afford, you know, to not only live here in Mount Lake Terrace, but be able to support our local businesses, you know, and raise a family.
Ms. Sonmore, what plans or ideas do you have for addressing the need for affordable housing in Mount Lake Terrace?
Affordable housing, so that's a big one. If it was easy, we already have done it. And the, what you were just talking about, the cost of living has changed so much, you know? We were built on affordable housing. Mount Lake Terrace was affordable housing. After World War II, that's why the cinder blocks went up to house our veterans coming home and their young families. So when we talk about affordable housing, I'm like, we are affordable housing, it's the economy's gotten out of control with minimum wage being here, and you've got the tech companies coming in, they're competing for these houses like you wouldn't believe. I think a block home here had gone for $600,000 when it originally sold for like $14,000. So you can see how the cost of living's changed. But affordable housing here, if it was easy and we could get the builders together, we could get funding together for it, we've got programs like L-Clip that we have certain funds that come into the city and we can increase our density where it saves property in farmlands. There's different programs out there, but they're not good enough. I'd love to just have everybody have the home that they want, they desire, but one of the things that I'd really like to see is, I know this is crazy, but paid daycare. So parents know that they have a place for their child to go so they can work. And the other thing is teaching students about budgeting, it's teaching them the importance of education. So when they go into the world, they know what the cost of living will be for them, and they have a reasonable outlook. I have to say, I graduated from Mount Lake Terrace High School, but when I came out, I didn't have a reasonable knowledge of what a house costs. So educating our young is another idea.
All right, next question for Mr. Woodard. What do you think is the city's biggest strength?
Well, I absolutely agree the people and the community answer, let them go in a different direction and say, our location is absolutely phenomenal. You know, and that's not something that we can change, but really to kind of put this in context, that we're a four-square-mile city, but we are known in DC, we are known up and down the state, and that's because we're doing really good work here. In fact, last night, we were at Coffee with the City. And just from our actions of rezoning, we had people who had never come to coffee in the city before, they happened to be realtors, but what they were doing was they were coming because they were saying, hey, we have folks who want to know what's going on here in Mount Lake Terrace. You're a sleeping giant here, all the imagery that they were using. But again, it's just this idea that we are poised to be in, if not the best location right at the beginning of Snohomish County and at one of the tail ends of King County. But that synergy that can take place from that with light rail, of course, being a part of that is one of the obvious ways, but we've had the freeway station for a long time as well. So it's just a beautiful destination city, but it's also a destination city that's got other destination cities around it that we can build upon and collaborate with in other ways. So definitely a location.
Ms. Ammon, how will you work with the business community and to have a closer working relationship between the business community and the government?
Much like what Councilmember Woodard said, speak to them. I mean, it's really hard to get to a council meeting. Sending an email is one way that people can reach out to the city council, but I really feel like we owe it to the businesses to talk to them, get into their space, have a one-on-one, what are you seeing? Not just about how business is going, how is the parking? How is the crime? I mean, what's going on? We all, almost all, are on Mount Lake Terrace Community Facebook page, and we see things come up when it's a big deal. But I think just going and, sometimes people don't raise a hand and say, hey, you know, we've got a really lousy sidewalk out here, someone keeps tripping on, or parking just doesn't work, we don't get enough parking spaces for our business. They don't raise that hand and tell someone, ask the question. And I think going out and asking that question, we owe it to them. They make our community.
Question for Ms. Murray. If a recession hits, what would you cut first out of the city budget?
So having read through the city budget, but not fully understanding it, I don't know that I can make a super informed decision at this point. I think what I would do, though, is really ask the city employees. I mean, I think from an organizational standpoint, when you're struggling as an organization, everybody has to take a look at what they're spending and ultimately how we can adjust that to meet the new realities of our finances. I think we do that personally with our personal budgets, you know, when things are tight, and I would expect the city to do that as well. I think ideally, instead of cutting full programs, I would look to find ways to cut costs across the board so that we could maintain some service while we're weathering the recession.
This isn't a trick question, but I know you've all been taking really diligent notes, and that's really great, because we would like to know what, which questions you haven't asked yet.
Do you want to go through that?
Yeah.
And raise your hand if you haven't answered that question.
So yes, so there they are. Raise your hand so we can get a straight nap. City council should be talking about that never gets talked about. Is there anybody who's not answered that question? Those, I think both have not had that one yet. How appropriate. Biggest challenge for Mount Lake Terrace when light rail comes? You haven't had that one yet. Okay. How will you work with the business community to have a closer working relationship between businesses and government? Has everybody answered that one? Okay. Recession hits, what would you cut first in the city budget? You've all had that one. What steps can we take at the city level to address housing insecurity and homelessness? Yes.
You haven't had that one.
You haven't had that one.
There's two that sound kind of alike.
They do. City's biggest strength? You've all had that one. What types of industries or businesses would you encourage to open up in Mount Lake Terrace? You've all had that one. Addressing the need for affordable housing, if anybody who hasn't had that one? Okay, well, that helps a lot. Okay, you guys are taking notes?
Yes. All right, we'll just make this work. Who just answered a question? Murray. Okay, next question. Ms. Sonmore, what do you think the city council should be talking about that never gets talked about?
I've been on council for 20 years, and I think everything I, I can just name things, and I wouldn't know. What is important to me is what you all would want us to talk about, and that's where I would go. We've talked about everything and anything for the last 20 years that I've been on council and living here, so that's a really hard one for me to answer.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Same question.
Okay.
What do you think the city council should be talking about that never gets talked about?
Well, I would say, though we're moving in the direction of talking about it, again, it goes back to diversity. One of my first couple sessions with the council, we were talking about the revamping of the website, and I did a quick perusal of the website, I just punched in the word diversity and I punched in the word equity, and biodiversity came up and I came up. And I've been on the council since February, and that's pretty troubling when you think in terms of a website and all of your details and everything, and the codes and all that, algorithms to pull up words. That said, we're moving in a direction to where, me being at other events, I've connected with some folks in Linwood who have a diversity commission and they want to come talk to the council. And I take personal joy in that because I feel like, well, I was the accessibility point for them, they could have come to us at any point, and they came when I was here on stone staff. But we're also talking about it just beyond racial lines and really looking at what is the real vibrancy of this community in sharing it, because whether we want to accept it or not, Mount Lake Terrace has a reputation that we're still trying to get out from underneath because our reputation precedes us, as the expression goes. But with consistent effort, I think that we're showing the rest of the world just how rich this community really is culturally, spiritually, as well as economically, frankly.
Ms. Ammon, what do you see as the biggest challenge for Mount Lake Terrace when light rail arrives in 2024?
So I don't know that we have one biggest challenge. I manage a commercial office building downtown that is sitting on top of the light rail station, and I also work in commercial property management development, so I know what happens when a light rail station goes in. And there are two things, I think. One is controlling the sprawl in the development and not being too big, too fast. That is something that can easily get out of hand. Light rail station goes in and Facebook raises their hand and they want three buildings. Or, you know, who says, Amazon doesn't say, hey, Mount Lake Terrace looks great, and they haven't said the word head tax. I want to go out there and I want three buildings. Twelve stories is enough for them if you give it them three plots. So that's a little scary to me, what that could look like. On top of that crime, if you have been to a light rail station, if you know that crime tends to travel along the light rail, it's something that needs to be addressed. Anytime there is a light rail station, there is increased SBD controls. We need to look at how we're going to handle that here in Mount Lake Terrace. Are we going to need to increase our police presence? So those two things combined.
All right, perhaps this is the final question? Or one more? Oh, one more. Getting there. Ms. Murray, what plans or ideas do you have for addressing affordable housing, the need for affordable housing in Mount Lake Terrace?
Thank you. So affordable housing is an interesting term, and I think that means different things to different people. I will say general affordability. I think we're moving towards some of that by increasing the types of homes that are available for people to live in. I think we have an opportunity to do more of that from kind of that missing middle perspective. I think finding ways for people who, an apartment isn't the right fit, but who don't need a huge lot of land, I think looking at different ways to bring different types of housing in for both, you know, I think retirees, I think a lot about retirees, when I've been chatting with them, who want to downsize their property but still want to maintain a home. And just looking at the different demographics in our community and how we could differently serve their needs in a way that might be more economical. I think from, I think Councilmember Sonmore talked a little bit about some of the various opportunities for us to partner on affordable housing, and there's programs out there to, I think, encourage developers to build more affordable housing, and so I'd be interested in learning more about those. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for me to learn more in this area, and it's something I would commit myself to do, should I have the opportunity to serve you on the council?
All right. Ms. Sonmore, what steps can we take at the city level to address housing insecurity and homelessness?
I have something to say. I think it's a social issue, and I think federal government needs to step in and help us with this. Cities cannot take on affordable housing and homelessness all by themselves. It's absolutely ridiculous. I'll be very personal with all of you, I have a family member who has a mental disorder and needed housing. It was horrific, trying to find them help, trying to find them housing. You think that it's easy? It's not. You think it's something that we can solve overnight? It all takes money. And guess where that money comes from? You! It all comes from you. It is something that we're not going to solve overnight. You just can't get, everybody will say, okay, just pitch in, give us money, because we have roads, we need police, we have all these other infrastructures that need help, and that's cities, that's their job. So when we're looking at the city budget, first, we have money that goes for roads, we have money that goes for the police, we have money that goes for our infrastructure. Guess where housing comes in? It's not really in that budget, and so it is something that we're going to have to be really strategic on, but I think we need to go to the federal government and say, hey, years ago, when we had a president in office, you cut all the mental facilities, and now look what happens. They're on our streets. If you're just addressing that mental piece and those homelessness for people, then we have the drug addiction one, that's another side, and then we have the economic one, that's another side. So it's something that we all have to work in.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Do we still owe you a question?
I somehow don't believe you do, but I'll take one.
We didn't want to be unfair to anyone, so we just wanted to make sure. If not, then we will have, you start with your closing statement and go this way.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to go with that.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
I might take two minutes, I'm an air. All right, so I really just want to begin by just saying how deeply humbling it is to be talking to you all about diversity and not recognize, you've already made some pretty big strides. I'm actually, I have a humbling opportunity to be running unopposed, and I did not take that lightly. The way that I looked at that is that you agreed with the city council on their selection process, and now you want to give me a chance, and I appreciate that dearly. I would also like to think that if I were running opposed, that it would still be a great competition and a great conversation, because to me, this isn't about competing against each other, it's about making sure that as a community, we feel like there are folks on the council who understand my story. And I would argue that I definitely understand story, I understand my own, I understand a lot more because I do a lot of listening. I'm an educator, and what it all comes down to, and a programmer. And between those two, I cannot be successful at the work that I do unless I'm listening to people and trying to make sure that voices haven't been erased in that process. I've spent a lifetime being erased, and at the same time, I've been a lifetime of making sure that I'm heard. And so in that regard, I know that everybody's wired that way, and I would love to make sure that you have at least one person who understands that is a spirit set and something that should be shared amongst all of us. So with that being laid out there, I would just say that it's been probably the greatest honor in a long time to be working two jobs at the same time for the same community. I'm over here at Edmonds Community College, I was just talking to my Lyft driver, as I usually take the bus, but just talking about how her own development going through Edmonds has been, while at the same time, I come over here and serve on a council that really has very tough decisions to be made, and we've got stability on the council, so having a new person timely-wise is just, again, deeply humbling, but also exciting. And to be that person right now is super exciting to think, hey, you're going to give me a chance to show you that this is the right time, the right place, and as an organization, we are really, and as a community, really, we are really growing, and we're going to make sure that no one gets left behind, and so to be a part of that process is an honor.
Again, my name is Laura Sonmore. Thoughts are running through my head, so I'd like to tell you that our new city hall will go up to bid right across the parking lot soon, and thanks to each of you, yes, we had to go through that three times, but you're paying for that, that's your building. Our downtown center plan has just been approved, and that's something I've been through twice in 2007 when we fought over seven stories, now we're going up to 12. It's going to be changing this community drastically and hopefully for the better, and we hope that we can build our relationships with our and we hope that we can build our relationships with our businesses and the people that live here so they can work, live, and play within our city. I'd like to tell you that I've been to DC probably 14 times, and I'm very proud to have brought home about $15 million for you, and that saves you money that's not coming out of your tax dollars to help build the roads, to help build the underground wiring for downtown, to help with 236 that might be driving you crazy right now. But these are all items that I've worked on. I was the president of Snohomish County elected for Cities and Towns. I was actually on that committee for about five years, and that's where we educate our electives on state and local and federal issues, and that was a real treat to do. But that was something that our whole city supported me on and helped as I was elected as that position, but I actually came as the city of Mountain Lake Terrace because it took a city to help build those agendas and help educate the other electives that we had. But there's so much more I want to say, and you're more than welcome to ask me questions afterwards, but I do, would love to have your vote. I am unopposed for the first time in many, many years, so this is a treat for me, I've never been unopposed, but I'd just like to thank you for your time, and thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to come up here and talk about it. It's a real treat, so thank you very much. Sorry, Jess.
Thank you again to the wonderful organizations who organized this evening's forum, and to each of you for taking time out of your busy lives to be here. I had a full circle moment this week because I was thinking about what message I wanted to share. I had the pleasure of watching Patty Murray speak this week at a women in business and leadership symposium put on by my employer, and the topic was seat at the table, women in business and leadership and civic engagement. My interest in civic engagement actually began in 1992, the same year that she was elected, a year that was dubbed Year of the Woman, and I had a teacher who put on a mock voting exercise. I have admired her career as she's worked in a pragmatic bipartisan way to support her constituents and advocate for their best interests by building coalitions, not necessarily by being the loudest voice in the room. If given the opportunity to serve on the council, I hope to go about my duties much the same way. I'm ready for city council, not only to bring my perspective to the table, but also to utilize my experience to bring more voices to the conversation to better reflect our community. I'll work to create on-ramps for voices that are currently underrepresented, and will advocate for, one of the ideas that I'd love to advocate for is a community academy, to help residents really understand how local government works and to empower them to share what they've learned with others. I'd also like to see us expand opportunities to serve the city and build capacity and future leaders. Council Woodard mentioned a diversity commission, which I would fully support, and I'd also like to see us look at a youth commission as well. In addition to civic engagement, I'd look to expand our partnerships regionally to better position us for increased economic development and to address big issues like housing affordability and homelessness. I'll advocate for preserving green space in our tree canopy, and I'm proud to have received the Sierra Club's endorsement, and I'll advocate for infrastructure investment and public safety in a capacity that supports our growth. Most of all, I will work as a tireless public servant and listen to you and the community so we can all work together to make sure that Mountain Lake Terrace is a place I can continue to be proud to live. I really am appreciative to those across the political spectrum who have given me their support, and humbly ask that you would consider voting for me as well come November fifth. Thank you.
This is a little intimidating, and again, my voice is out. This isn't how I like to talk to people. I don't like to talk at people, I like to talk with people. So you've got a lot of information tonight. My hope is that you're going to be able to leave with a little sense of who you're going to be voting for in November and help you make that informed decision. For position seven particularly, you have two women, two moms, two involved community members, and so you have to decide based on different skill sets, education, character, experience, and backgrounds, who you want to serve you on the city of Mountain Lake Terrace city council, and who you want to represent the city for the next four years. I have set out materials in the back, I don't think that this even scratches the surface. You can contact me on my website, I will be at Cedar Plaza Starbucks, eight to 10, every Sunday through Election Day. Come have a chat if you feel so inclined. Anybody who wants to come talk to me, or even just reach out on my website, I would come have coffee at your place, at your time, at your, whatever works in your schedule. I highly recommend you stick around for the school board members. The schools are the foundation of the future residents of Mountain Lake Terrace, and that's very important. Myself, I'm not able to stick around, I do need to rush over to Mountain Lake Terrace curriculum night for my 11th grade daughter, and so that's also important to me. I do want to thank everybody for hosting again, and everybody here on the council, and for everything that you guys have done, but thank you. Thank you for coming out and spending your time with us, it means a lot to the community.
I want to thank the candidates, and thanks to the library again for hosting. We'll take a short break for setup for the school board candidates, and also wanted to thank Maria Ellis from Especia Break for providing the coffee tonight, so it's great. Please stick around for school board if you're able, and we can get started again, and I promise we've got fewer questions, so fewer chances to remember. Thank you very much.